For the school board meeting for Madison Central School District. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, equal and visible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number five will have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Joel. Second by Jordan. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passed. Approval of consent agenda items seven through eight. That would be the minutes of the June ninth regular meeting and then the approval of the bills which was listed for Liz Lindsay, Lori and Mel. They went through the bills, everything looked good. So entertain a motion for those consent agenda items. So moved by Melanie.
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not, not the bottom, how about the top?
All right, do we all in favor of that motion? We did that already?
Yep.
Okay, so motion passed. Number nine, how are we doing? Let's see if you can get her fired up. Number nine is a hearing of delegations and written communications. Is anybody here to address the school board? I don't see them, so. I think we'll move right on to number ten. Consider the audit agreement for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
And usually we have this in June, we have it received now. Yellow CPA advisors, that's our, is our audit for a number of years, they also do the product audit. They gave us our proposal, it's twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, about three thousand up from the prior year. Each year there's more regulations added to it. And that's what they're simply have to reason for their increase. They do a very good job, they do keep our audits all close online, I see the previous one. But then they come in around November and go through all of our stuff in this past year. I would recommend approval of that agreement.
So entertain a motion for the approval of that. Motion by Jordan.
Second.
Second by Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passed. So move to adjourned for the regular meeting by Jordan.
Second.
Second by Joel. Non-negotiable meeting adjourned.
That would, I think that would rival.
Same way.
So call the order, the annual meeting of Madison Central School Board. Get the new members, I think I'll be right where you're at, or not new members, but attorney members, there's five of the. Yeah, everybody see? No, I'll read out loud if you agree, say I will, or I do. Then I'll be ready to write me down. And do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota? That you will faithfully and partially perform your duties as a member of the school board of the Madison Central School District, state county, South Dakota, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during your continuous in that office and until your successor is elected and qualified. And then you'll just sign it and give it by there.
I like how simple the answer is. I think we'd hold on it.
And this is binding, just your successor might pick a lot.
I have members recorded. The quorum is established, we'll go for election of the board president. Are there any nominations for the board president?
Is it for you to elect someone who's not here?
Please ask that. Okay. I think Lori has, has added to her workload, so she would appreciate not contributing in her.
Capacity.
And we can ask, is there a nomination, does anybody wish to know that work, so. Yeah. There's something I'd like to do at work, I think it's making a nominee, if that would like to be.
I'm trying.
If you're willing. Will anybody nominate?
I'll nominate Melanie.
Okay. And is there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Steve.
I'll nominate Steve.
Steve proven under the bus for first years.
Turn around, turn plate.
And any other, any other nomination? With none, then what we do is we do sign a ballot, is there we have a marking device? Do you have pencils, or is that we have? So you'll just.
We don't have to vote in blood.
You'll just write a name on the card, you show up, say on, what we do is we just, we just flip it over. We can't allow until we hit four, until we hit, yeah, it has to be four onto it. When you're done off, it comes back. So if we go three, then we just fold it again. Yeah, yeah. Have we gotten down?
No.
Okay. It's not often we, we do this, but it was, that was the last time I could, yeah.
It's a good thing. Markups getting. Good action.
Yeah, I'm all mixed up, onto it. Steve. Melanie. Melanie. Steve. 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 So Steve, sorry, Steve. The foreword. Now, have these over here if anyone wants to review. President Nelson, can you take over the meeting?
Okay.
I'm just calling for vice president.
So now I will call nominations for election of a vice president.
I'll nominate Melanie for vice president.
Can you second it? Well, I second. You should be able to, because you're.
Well, there's a second nomination.
I said I second.
Or, yeah, but isn't that.
I don't have to second, those are just nominations.
So I'm doing the next motion that's happening now.
Can I cease nominations? Is that what I have to cease nominations?
Okay, motion to cease. Second for that one.
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor of ceasing nominations?
Aye.
Post. Nominations are. Put number, they're not numbered.
So the ballot is cast. This one is Melanie's vice president.
So, okay, we've dominated, get Melanie's vice president. Number six, approval of the agenda for the special annual, annual reading. Motion by Jordan. Second by.
Melanie.
Melanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passed. Number seven, personnel action. You want me to read all those? But you can see we have a number of them, there'll be some more coming yet once we get, or some of the lower level coaching in place. You know, we have two or three pairs yet that we need to hire. So there'll be some more next month, but a lot of them in there, just a number of them, and there actually ones have been in those positions before. But they're not, they're staff on.
I don't know, I have pretty big concerns about the Dan Hall. I've heard some great things about him.
We better get him while he's cheap. And the educational adjustment is, is Andrew Johnson, our new principal. So moved. Motion by Joel.
Second.
Second by Kirsty. All in favor?
Aye.
And post. Motion passed. Hearing, hearing of delegations from written communication from school patrons will give the opportunity to address the school board. I see none are present, so we'll move on to number nine, the administrators' report. Like I touched on, we'll have a few positions yet to fill, I know that Mr. Ricky and Mr. Baskerville are actually working together right now to get some of the sign by since Mr. Ricky was getting it to this point, has to hand it off, make sure it's a good transition to get those in place. Building project update, I met with Bill today and they said we're on schedule, right? And he said, yes, I'm not even aware of his, I said, well, good, but I am, so let's keep it on schedule. He felt good about where they're at and, and with the east wall that we had to deal with. That's actually all sheet rock except for one room, one wall and one room, and that'll get done tomorrow, so. Right now cabinet installation continues to take place, aim for putting those in. Ceiling tile installation, there's a lot of ceiling tiles, folks, that's gonna take a while. We've got a two man crew up here right now and it's, that'll take a while, but they need to pull more in for that. Fire alarm installation, this will be worked on, that'll be located in that seven, the entrance and a new room for the main control. Cabinet countertops, they started installing those now today in the classrooms. The spraying installation, vapor barrier was finished this afternoon. Sheet rock, like I say, is all sheet rock except for one wall, or one, just the north wall that they'll have done tomorrow. Because they'll be muddying and taking tomorrow already on most, on most rooms. And then they have the sheet rock wall that'll be in between to divide the SEC room. So that's all that sheet rock they'll be muddying at, and then the two doors that were in there have been brick and those rooms are sealed off now, they'll get flooded, then they'll be the padding that'll go on there. So then the inside, even though as I walked through, there's a lot to get done, fourteen to sixteen days yet, but they feel very good about it. The outside addition forms rebar, they're in place, they're gonna actually start pouring tomorrow, or even tomorrow for the footings. And shortly after that, they'll start putting up the wall panels to pour those. The west loop entrance, so they continue to work on that, they're getting the gravel now for the X inches of asphalt that needs to go in. And that'll be completed here in the next week or two, so this loop will be back open. One thing that'll change over with for next year is that, that'll be our bus pickup and drop off. So all of our parking on the north side won't be there. Because that loop won't be done until whenever. So this will become bus drop off, pickup. And then our parking spots, thirty-three of them on the north side, they'll be gone because when you have that, there's a bus lane, you move across and. We had a number of open spots there, we should be fine, we moved a few to the back reserved, but I think we'll be okay, but you gotta go through the bad heat with it. And I just, I can't see us having cars parked there and then buses come in and kids run between cars, so that's why we're not doing anything to park it over there for next year. We do have the water line that was leaking, if you want to go out, it's, the waterfall's still going. That will have to take place here, and I didn't ask him, but they'll have to dig up tonight a little bit to get to the main hookup to get that in. But the pipe itself is just falling apart, so. It's one of those things, there's not much choice, you gotta fix it.
It's good to have it done.
Yeah, get it done now before we get a building there and then have to tear it up later.
That's a lot of the school, it's.
That'd be ours. Until, until it, when it hooks up to the city line, that's, they just have the line once it hooks up, it's ours from there on in. And of course, I think most of it's located on the south side of Ninth Street, so we don't have to dig across to get to it. And then patch that back in. It's pretty typical, any type of a building or a repair, we're gonna come across, you're gonna have things that you didn't know were there. It's just that simple. But all in all, it's going good, Hausmann's been good to work with, JLG's been good to work with. We've kept things moving as far as we've had to do a change order with that wall, whatever, just because of timeframe, didn't have time to mess around, it's a dumb, it's a nerdy, a dumb thing. So, much of what we can walk through at the end, tell you where we're at and hope for that.
You said the parking lot, like when will the, when is like a potential date for the?
I don't think that'll be until in the spring, because they'll have to get all the other stuff, work done in front. By the time they, at least the last one I talked to them, by the time they get the, move everything laid down, it's gonna be past the timeframe of putting asphalt down. We have a meeting Thursday though, I'll grill on it again, this is what we have to say.
A little second wise now, it's gonna look really nice.
It'll be nice, it'll be a really nice project once it's done. Like I said, they've been good to work with, they're doing a good job, and the subcontractors too have been new off the halls and stuff, they've been good to get things done. So superintendent report is concluded? That's all I have for you, yeah. Okay, so then we're going to, the approval of the consent agenda items ten or five or group, ten through fifteen are group for action to expedite meeting. This grouping does not limit discussion concerning any item or member would like to have addressed. So we have number ten, designation of the official newspaper as Madison Day of Leader. Eleven, designation of bank depositories, you can read through those. Number twelve, appoint Mitchell Brooks as the business manager as treasurer of all the funds of the school district and authorize him to sign all checks for the board. And then including the trust and custodial, and redress that. Number thirteen, designate bonded employees, the business manager and bookkeeper for a hundred thousand dollars each, and the activities director for fifteen thousand dollars. Designate legal counsel as Lambers, Lambers and Clive, Lambers, Clive, Becker, Dawson, Miller, and KSP School Law. And fifteen, appoint the business manager as authorized representative for the food service program. The title ID of federal funding applications, and the superintendent as authorized representative for all other federal and state programs.
None of these have changed in three years.
So if there's any questions on that grouping, we can pick them out now.
Can you explain again the bonded employees?
That comes down to how much cash we could have at one time, so then there's a bond in place. So pay it, but also, it's sort of like an insurance type thing, but we have our normal crime insurance, but if something was missing or bonded and they can't prove it, the school's not left out. Or if it's a crime on the other side, if it's electronic or something, it'd be tractable. So required to be bonded, certain, certain employees are, the AD isn't, but they hold, and there were cash being taken from events.
It's good. So, are there any more questions?
No, I just want to lead a motion, but.
Yeah, we'll lead a motion, so. Go, second by Kirsty. All right, all in favor of approving those motions, are those consent agenda items?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, same as I, motion passed. So we're going to approval of consent agenda items sixteen through twenty-one. And they're grouped to expedite the meeting, this grouping does not limit discussions or concerning any of the items that the member would like to have addressed. So we're going to go number sixteen, approve, approve joining the associated school boards of South Dakota sponsored emergency school bus, bus assistant pack, which is really good. Approve the publication of staff salaries for the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six school year as required by state law. Eighteen, appoint the standing committees. They would be along the same lines that we had last year? Appoint the surplus property appraisers, Steve Olson, Jeremy Federer and Dan Hall. Appoint or designate regular school board meetings as the second Monday of every month at five thirty at Madison Central School District. And adopt district policies. That was included. Adopt the district policies for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, this action makes official the district policies for the year. Additions and revisions may be made as necessary during the year. So that is the grouping. Anybody have questions, want to pull those up? Want to talk about that emergency school bus thing, that's pretty cool. I don't know why a school wouldn't do it. We just send the names of our four contacts that we have here, Jeremy, Principal, AD. So basically if someone's bus breaks down, we're gonna borrow on our bus to get them back and whatever. They'll get the bus back for us the next day, we've had to use it, unfortunately coming back from the hills, we used Kadoka's bus. Last year we had one of the vans, tire guts, or was the bus. Yeah, tire, when they pulled in, there was a grate sticking out, so they pulled in that wood socket to use the bathrooms. Coming back from here, we had flat tire and no one in the town had a building to do it, so they gave us one of their vehicles to get here and it's just, it's free, and I don't know why a school doesn't do it.
Any other questions on those items? Everybody's happy with their committee's assignments?
I haven't said, I think every school would do it anyway, but it's nice to have that, we have that book within every bus, so they know who they can contact.
Okay, so I entertain the motion to approve those. Motion by Lindsay.
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, number twenty-two, we're gonna consider the approval of an open enrollment application, number twelve, twenty-six?
Twenty, yeah, twenty-six, twelve is the one I would ask to move on. We have two others though, I have to, they came in late, we'll go checking first before we approve those, so I just asked the twenty-six, twelve to approve.
Twenty-six, twelve, we're gonna approve, the other one will be next month.
Next month, yeah.
So I entertain a motion to approve an open enrollment, twelve, twenty-six, twelve. Motion by Melanie. Second by Jordan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passed. Number twenty-three, the first reading of proposed changes to the school policies, DFE, gate receipts, admissions, and participation fees?
Can you pull that up then?
And JEA compulsory school attendance, so we're gonna start with the gates and receipts, admissions and participation fees up to the end.
And it's just state law change. They had, there was a little bit of a disparate schools and some patrons and whatever, so we all got dragged into it, but basically that requires us.
It's the cash one.
That you have to, you have to accept cash, which we already do, we accept both. But now we added the bottom, the top part is what we've had, we added the bottom part about cash, cash payment will be accepted for admissions to school, so on. Word for word for associate school boards. And we're gonna use bond now this year, it sounds like, so I'll make it even easier for those that wanna use credit versus cash, so. First reading, this is the recommended language that comes from associate school boards, so have it out there for the first reading, just so you can see it. And if you want, I think there should be changes to it, we can make changes and for next one. It's basically saying what we already do.
And then we want to talk about the other ones as well?
Sure. In the compulsory JEA, there's a lot of change this year. And so some of what we had above was in the recommended new wording, rather than trying to keep this, and it, we just got rid of what we had. This is what we're looking at, even though some of what this is is exactly what we had already. The big change is that now at seventeen, let me find it here, there's other options for them to, basically, not attend school. So second one, a child with drop of school attendance at age seventeen with written consent of the child's parent, guardian, or other custodian. District will keep the documentation of such written consent and will forward a copy to the Department of Education within thirty days for receipt. That's the big addition that was added during the legislative session here.
Okay, and this is the first reading of the proposed changes, so there's no action, no motion or anything, so we're just gonna move on to. Number twenty-three, two, I guess. Consider approval, annual approval of the busing proposal from ORR and Chester School Districts.
And the two proposals are the exact same proposals that we've seen for the ten years I've been here. There's no changes in pickup, no changes in the, Chester's that classic corner, and ORR's has the pickups they had before too on that moment, right? But they're in that documentation, they're almost hung on here, sorry. I'm tired, so I'm gonna go. ORR's would be at. Community Center, Living Hope Church, Flynn Field, Pizza Ranch. And that's the ones they've had. And we sent the same thing, we actually have a pickup spot in Roanoke that we've sent to them to do the approval tonight as well.
Second.
Is there, do we have stops in those communities?
In Roanoke.
All right, we've got a motion by Jordan, and a second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passed.
Mr. Robinson, did we have one from Howard last year, pickup spot from Howard?
We have, we've received that for this year.
There's been change on software check, let's see if there, might be an obvious. Can I mention that?
He sends it late last year, almost over.
I'll check with the new guy, don't be long.
Castill projector, Dan?
All right, and so we're to number twenty-four. Conduct the hearing to consider the proposed budget for.
So luckily I have a cartridge.
Time's that pretty well.
We were guessing. She's, she doesn't start.
I don't, is there any reason, I mean.
I think we can go.
I don't think I've been notified to wait.
If you start, someone walks in, you can start over, it's fair.
Yeah.
I'd say it's reasonable. Unless, unless you need a bathroom break.
I would say it's reasonable.
Okay.
It's five fifty-nine, but my clock usually runs this thing either, so I don't know.
Yeah, this is what we published into the paper, and so like the top here will just compare this, the proposed to last year's. Very similar, except for the construction, more construction this year. And then the other piece I want to highlight for is estimated fund balance use. And so what, what that is, that's, that's, that's estimated maximum amount of balance that we can use in that year without coming forward, to the board. We do estimate that we will have fund balance use, fund balance use and number of programs. And we have our revenues, which is local, state, local, and federal, and then same with, thing with our expenditures or appropriations. And where, which building they go into, which program they go with. So that's that summary, and this will publish onto the, the website with prior years upon, upon approval of that. I did wanna show too, our budget is, every month in the expenditure report, you'll see the, this is the budget.
Could you do the, yeah.
Yeah, and this one, this is necessarily what we're gonna be showing for our thing, but I just kinda wanna show the expenditure report.
There, okay.
Show the budgets. Yeah, it'll show our budget, oh yeah, thank you. It'll show our budget, you'll see it every month, you know, on the expenditure report, our expenditure, what budget, what's been spent, what you're meaning, type thing. And the same with our revenue, the revenue summary is our budgeted revenue, and you'll be able to see what we brought in. So I mean, like our budget's always viewable, it's always transparent, it's out there every month, it's something. But I'll go into kind of the details of it, and, and we can go, we don't have a lot of changes, I mean, we did the top ten list, it wasn't a very big one in the past, is that pretty good size? Around there, so this comparison, we're just showing what's proposed versus what was this year and what was the year before, and I always think that's somewhat helpful. This is our revenue, so we'll go through our revenues first, the orange is the state formula. And the yellow is the secondary part of state formula, it's the other revenues and how they factor in. And then the, the blue are kind of some changes we have, we, we, we earned a decent amount of interest this year because we're holding money to go into the project. That will not necessarily be there for us next year. And the opt out, we did ask for additional opt out in this budget to help make ends meet. This one can highlight on those, so if we come down to our overall, you can, there was local, here's like the federal, federal program. Come down to bottom here, we're a point four percent increase in budget from a prior year. And a lot of the budget is driven by enrollment, we did reduce one high school staff member to help get us nearer to the goal. And so our, our estimated revenue is ten point three million on the expenditure side. Just how it's formatted, we'll have like the, this is the elementary school, we'll have teacher salaries, aid salaries, temporarys, which is kind of sub salaries. Social security pieces, the retirement pieces, the health insurance, worker comp, different registration fees, professional development, professional, technical. Lot of different services in there, retire memberships, stuff like that, travel, the phone usage, and then supplies. So the elementary budget went down, we had a person budgeted last year and then we had going without that, so we took it out for this year. But two million dollars for the elementary instructional function. And I won't go as much detail into all the rest, I just wanted to see the, the general layout. Title two is a federal program, they pay for class introductions, when we have a class size that falls kind of in between, the federal will pick up a teacher in that situation. And we no longer have any more ESR, so those are gone, so our total elementary function is at two point zero eight million. And more ESR, our middle school function, these are salaries, between staff, temporary, health insurance. Pretty, pretty similar, just some small increases to kind of fit our negotiations and where some things have changed, one point three eight million on there. Plus like increase, no more ESR. A high school program, you can see the, the pieces there, went up about four thousand, so after all of the changes, salaries and everything. And those, those three functions are the line of, of a large part of our, our budget. No more ESR at the high school, we have our Perkins, this is our Perkins right here, we kind of budget it very similarly each year, it might change a little bit depending on what's being asked for, but it is relatively routine. ELD is English Language Development, we are funded partially for this, last year we got around eighty thousand, this year, and we get to actually a number tomorrow, but it looks like we missed seventy, seventy-five thousand of it. So we do fund some of that locally, or at least half of it locally. Our title one program, that's a federally funded program, we have a couple of teachers, a couple of parents in that program. That works a lot with reading in elementary, early elementary. We have our SRO program, a agreement with the city, we have our counseling department, we have three counselors in the industry, and that's their amounts. The health services is our nursing contract. Academic enrichment is title four is a federal program, they cover a number of innovative type programs. First of all, just kind of get together and, and search for different types of things we can try out with our building, our buildings. The mentor program's a state program, anytime there's a new staff member, we file, we meet certain criteria, they'll reimburse us for that program, it's beneficial to our staff, beneficial to the new person. We have our school library program, there used to be a certification under as a teaching certification, we don't have that anymore, so it just shifted into the salary piece to it. Our technology, this is Dan, Dan's apartment. Just kind of showing each, each of the different pieces. Board of Education, this is your guys', the, the big chunk, our liability insurance comes out of the school boards, that's, that's kind of what comes from, but most everything stays relatively the same each year. Election, there will be some big changes in elections coming up this next year. So this is budgeted that we share the expense with the city going forward, I don't exactly how we'll share them, because it moves the date to the county date. So maybe the three of us will share, or maybe we'll go with the county, or maybe we'll hold our own. Legal services, anytime we, we talk to our attorney and there's charges to that. Auditing services, I do always budget that light, that when others review us, and they ask why it's light, I say they're charging too much. Superintendent's office, there. And then the principal's offices, so principals, the state gives us our functions, they're all under one code onto it. Others, there was the original ESR which funded Zach's position, and that moved up to the principal line item when the ESR disappeared. So there's a small Medicaid claiming fee. And there, here's the fiscal sources, my office, my two assistants, on there. Just kind of, there's any, so here's our building grounds and upkeep, so we spend one point three, four million to upkeep all of our facilities, all of our grounds. We did have some changes in electricity, we had some big changes in insurance. Lob school's been hit lately, so that whole line code across the insurance industry's changed. Repair and maintenance have gone up a little bit as the building's aged, on there. People transportation, this is then all of our, our routes. All the different pieces to it, I did leave fuel the same, we didn't hit the limit this year, so I'm thinking, I've felt it maybe optimistically that's a bad choice, but we can hold. Printing and duplicating, this is for all of our, any supplies or maintenance that goes into our machines and our paper. I'll start going a little quicker to the, we get this, also, the foundation offices, our sports, I'll just kind of show how one works, they all, the sum of those, the salary. The benefits, and then the supplies, until we have everything broken out by high school, middle school, boys, girls. And so, and you'll see this in our normal expenditure line, line items on the reports, so you can always see what, what sport costs. So they're all just broken out listed, that way they're easy to track, we can make sure that everybody gets what they requested to it. I do wanna stop at activities director, it's a half, principal half activities director, so that falls under this line, right there. Did want to show the transportation a little bit.
And that doesn't have equipment in it?
It does have some medical, like when we stock the, the room, the medical room, it's hard to split out the whole bunch a little, so we just kind of charge under the AD. When we report to the state, it reports under six thousand functions, so actually all of this is grouped into one line and then sent to the state when you do our annual report. We have our, our transportation, so traveling to and from, games and events, if we spend in the state tournaments and such, we spend a decent amount on, on activity transportation also. On there, and I was kind of quick going through, there's all the different programs, we added strength and conditioning prior year, we added the esports. We debate, we didn't budget for, because there was no, it wasn't held last few years, if there's interest be held, we can bring that back. Those are some of the, some of the big changes, and all were different, elementary, you know, music, high school, middle school music, band vocal, locations, all kinds of school funded programs.
That is, that's an impressive offering of extracurriculars.
We, we have a very nice list, and it makes up five point one four percent of our budget. So we tried to hold nearer the, nearer the five, if we start going over that, then we start taking from classroom or for somewhere else. We just try to make sure each line item kind of holds, they're all, anytime we get, take a small increase, we don't want one group to get it. And, and, but it doesn't say exactly need to fall in that line, but. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like what is the percentage of students that are involved in some sort of extracurricular?
I don't, I don't really know.
I believe that, we turn that in every year, but I don't have time to hear it.
I'll never see that, but.
I thought it's nice, I mean, you would, I bet it'd be the representation of how well it's used as well. That was my.
Yeah, that would be kind of the norm.
Question, but thank you. I, I always brag about it, but now we talked about that, it's essential, is our offerings, so. Only like the wide range of opportunities.
And for five percent, I mean, if you're turning a percent, it's not a huge flying share of the, of the budget, but we do have, it seems like we have very nice programs. And I went back to the revenue tab, so capital is pretty much all tax, local taxes, we do charge our advertising in gyms, that's at forty thousand. On there, and then we have just a little bit miscellaneous, and then this year, that'll be the fund balance use of the building project, and that's what we've been saving up. So a seven million dollar budget, add more to the, the expenditure, so the instructional textbooks, instructional software. We buy, we buy the rotation, seven year rotations, we buy curriculum each year, and then we have our normal maintenance on ours. But we spend a very, very, I mean, it's, it's not outlined, but a very good amount into our instructional software and our textbooks. We have technology equipment, that's all of our, our Chromebooks, any of the display devices, projectors, anything like that, docking cameras, they come from there. And they request those each year, and then we have just equipment, equipment like, in, in this line item is a swing set that was put up at the elementary. Equipment like, in, in this line item is a swing set that was put up at elementary, um, considered instructional, and there's just tables, chairs. Uh, a lot of different things they ask, so each building has their, um, requests and amounts in there. And we do leave them in discretion in case something comes up, if something breaks or, or they're needing something done, we don't want to have just, we want to say no, we'll make sure that we can take care of it. Those are buildings, then we have our library, that's mostly circulation, um, and databases in there. Our technology, the technology changed since we first came out with this, um, our E-rate, a few of the projects are being held till the next year. And so we have one project in there. I don't remember the exact amount, a hundred and eighty thousand maybe. Um, and then our soft, all the different softwares we buy, and these aren't classroom, these are the, the district wide softwares, like Adobe and Microsoft campus agreements and. And such, and here's our building project, um, we, we've spent to one point, I think one point, uh, two, one point three so far. So about five million is remaining. Our building and grounds, um, repairs and maintenance, a lot of repairs and maintenance have to do with replacing concrete. Um, HVAC when a mortar or pump goes out, um. I can't recall off the top of my head, a lot of that line item, there's quite a few items in there. Um, and the equipment, if they specifically like shampooers and a few things like that, they request, and that comes from there, and then capitalized equipment is, is, uh. I think what we have in there is we have budget in there, hopefully we can get it all worked out, is the building to hold our vehicles, we've been working on for a long time. If that can, if that can, if our building project works out, we hopefully can get that completed then also. On there, and then transportation, um, the, the thirty-four thousand is our payment. For the buses, so when we, we, we bought two buses, we took out loans on them. But our advertising in the gym pays for our coach buses, that's kind of how that agreement works. We took out loan, and every recollect advertising paid for the coach bus, and there are advertisers like that, that they're purchasing something. That's used by all activities, um, and it looks very sharp, and it's a way of getting, you know, like a coach bus in every school has such things, so it's kind of nice to have. And have our kids transported on, on those items.
So the advertising for, on the gym, so goes for the buses, or does it also cover some of the cost on the scoreboard?
Yeah, there's, there's software on there, there's maintenance on, yep, it covers that. And we do kind of, e- each time that, like with, we'll, we'll pick projects that fit within the theme of hitting the go particular items. Uh, when time comes to the updated display boards, I'm sure we'll use a lot of it for that. And then, print, printing, this is the lease side of our printer, postage meters, copiers. Um, trying to think what else. And that's, we do five year leases on that type of equipment. And then we just have activities, uh. Uniform rotations, helmets, our payment to Dakota State for use of their, their facility, all that, so that's, that's at seven million dollars. Of the capital A. And it'll go to the, um, the rest will go quite a bit quicker, those are our large ones. The special education program, the gold is the formula, the state formula, we have a valuation as such that we don't get local. Or we don't get dollars from the state, so it's, it's actually funded all local, through local tax levies, we do get some federal. Um, whoops, federal money down here to cover a few items, we'll, we'll show through that. So about two point seven million dollars for the special ed. Um, theirs is broken down. Mild to moderate, and then severe is how the, the, the state breaks down, so we're, our, it's our mild to moderate program. We have our salaries, aid salaries, um, health insurance, a lot of it goes into wages and salaries. And then different textbooks and, and devices needed by the children. And then the IDA, which is a federal, they cover a few staff members for to be in our, in our mild to moderate, they cover four staff members to help enhance that program. And so mild to moderate is a little over a million dollars, our severe program, um, is about six hundred thousand, you can see the wages and salaries. And then we go into day programs, this is if, if children are, are receiving their instructions from another type of facility, but it's just during the daytime. We transport back and forth, um, that's what that program is. Residential is if they receive their, their education from another facility, but they stay, they stay the night there, or they're, they're, they're there full time. Um, that's what that program is, we had somebody move out, so that's why it went down some. And then some of the federal programs will pick up some of that expense. Early childhood, this is mostly three to five, we do early childhood services out of elementary, the room there, and then bus back and forth, and this is to run that program.
Um, back to the special ed.
Yep, yep.
It seems like sometimes it's hard to get that number, it's because it's, it moves.
It's really hard, yeah.
Unpredictable, because there's a lot of divisions that you, that you broke that out into.
Yeah.
How is it, like, do you come with supplemental budgets if you're under, or how do you transfer?
Yeah. If, so if, if we try to take what's known, you know, at the end of the school year, we budget that, and then we, we don't get the increase until a little bit later. But we can, it's usually five to seven, um, through the state, the different institutions. Um, if we hear of a student coming, we usually budget half, um, just in case they do don't come. But you can kind of see we went from one forty-seven to two ninety-two to two nineteen, um, you had students move in, students move out within the same year. Um, it was a, a high need, so it, it, and that, 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 those two line items alone shift. The line is, I mean, that, that's a big changes in special education.
They can change tomorrow, over the years, I mean, I've been impressed on how you handled that, that variability without a lot of. You just kind of make it happen.
And well, and my side's pretty easy, Michelle's and Paula's, there's much tougher. I mean, they gotta have all the insights on what services are needed, and, and when they go to that facility, what all, you know, it needs to be touched on and something like that, so. Everything has a charge.
That part of that budget is not as small.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, if, if, if for some reason there's a movement that happened, we would go into the year, see how the expenditures are going, they come back, and we'd ask for a supplement budget to.
There, the whole group, other team does, I guess it's great.
Again, and then, like, the nursing in special ed, it's typically if a residential student needs nursing services, that, that charges this line, that real. Real often, but, um, psych services, this is paid with our co-op, the psych will have to do a new ballot on all children that enter into special education. And so then that's, covers that service. And then our speech, speech is a, I, I bet speech is a fourth of our special ed program as far as the number of students, they're not as expensive of a student, but. Um, they deal with quite a few students, we have two speech language pathologists that work with them. Our physical therapy, these are services done in, in school settings for students, and then our occupational therapy on those. There are administrative costs, um, this is the director portion. On there, and then also the, the co-op has a director in each, and then also our Medicaid administration, and then that portion. Each school pays to cover those two items. Then the transportation, we have the different roads, we have, so that's the transportation for it, I'm putting Dan to sleep. And then, so that, that's the special education, um, our bond redemption high school has a few more years, I think it's, I should know this, I think twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two. Is when that ends, so we'll bring in this in, in taxes, and then we'll expand. There's our, our payment that we're expecting for the years, we typically set aside ten thousand, um, so then that very last year, we won't have to tax.
And as interest rates went up, you're not, you're, you're not like paying those off early anymore. When the interest rates were low, you're going ahead.
Yeah, but we have them fixed, and we did the refinance on a few years ago, and got nice rates all the way through, so as they're sitting now. Yeah, we're, we're sitting, we're sitting real good, yeah, yeah, the people that own them probably wish they could sell them off. And then, um, food service, food service had a bit of changing, um, not so much to the dollar, but. Um, the federal reimbursements that we got through COVID and the year after probably a bit higher, that's dropping quite a bit. Um, most everything slightly stays the same, uh, so we'll use a bit of fund out, we still do have a, uh. On the top level of cash reserve, so we didn't have to have such a large increase this year. Um, once our reserve is gone, we'll have to do increases like most schools do. Here's kind of the pay, the, um, director salary, the staff salaries, you know, other benefits. Repairs to equipment, different supplies, food we purchase, um, donated commodities. Um, different computer, computer equipment softwares, and then in that, it's a business type activity. So we run a full depreciation schedule on all the different assets, and there's we.
But that's not a feature too?
It's, uh, it's not too bad, it's kind of actually fun, because we don't do that in government accounting, right? Then the last couple, driver's ed, we can't keep that always the same, we typically do seventy, ninety kids, or sixty, ninety kids somewhere in there, so we can't keep that same. And then health insurance, you know, as long as we keep holding like we are, um, we should be able to hold that line for a little bit. Health insurance really comes down to my claims that we have, um, we have a couple of high claims, and that can take a hit, so here's the expenditures between the driver's ed. We do charge for vehicle usage, uh, to the program, and then for, um. Health insurance, you know, what we pay in administration, reassurance, and then what we pay in claims. So that's, that, I kind of went over my sixteen million. That, uh.
Because we haven't even reviewed the top ten.
Well, the top ten, we are, we did that. So then, I did ma- I did round the number, make it a little bit more even, this year twenty-two million, nine hundred thousand, nine hundred. Five hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand, five hundred onto it. So that, um, that concludes our budget hearing, which is just the review. And then the next item, I'll quick just bring up the sheet, um, for it. Because that'll show how, you know, how we levy online. How our levies are set. Apologize for having that up. So then this would be our annual resolution, it, it approves the budget and it sets the levies. Um, a lot, the budget amounts here are what's listed in our, in the, in our, what we went through. Here's the levies needed, the budget and the levy don't fall in the same year, we start July, the levies start in January. So there's sometimes some little nuances between them, the general fund, mill levies are set by the state. Uh, they're for owner occupied and agricultural, um, the special levy, the state sets a max onto it. We, we are currently taxing at the max, uh, on a rate right at the low, if, if we have another good year, we can take that back down. Um, capital A, we have to ask in dollars, um, so we create our budget, we have a specific dollar amount we ask for. Bond redemption is also asked in dollars, and that's what we need from that calendar year to pay for our fiscal year. And then the opt out, same thing, we ask from that, from that calendar year to pay for our fiscal year.
And that one point one two five is per.
Thousand.
Per thousand dollar evaluation.
Yeah. Um, there, and we've seen, you know, in the years I've been here, the, the, there's the color Gabriel Act, as violations rise. The mill levies get smaller, so we don't get out of line, um, so, I mean, when I first started. You know, owner occupied was sitting over four, and now it's at two point five, and they've been, they've been adjusting that, I think in a good way.
Back into the capital A for a thousand?
Um, I, I do run a calc, I don't think I have it.
No worries.
But I think we're, I think we're around like two point two, two point three mils, or like it used to be there was a little, but it had to be three, um.
And that is capped now still, that rule is.
There's a, there's a limit that we can go up to, yeah, so. Probably two, three, five, or something like that, or, and we're slightly below it, but during the construction project, we want to make sure we. It's better than taking out the, a loan and paying the interest, and use as much as we can.
I think you're doing your best to use taxpayers' wise, taxpayers' monies wisely and.
We all, we all pay, we all pay it.
Yeah. And not just, yeah. So I appreciate your diligence and concern for the taxpayers.
All right. So we conducted the hearing, and now we are considering approval of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget and tax request.
So that's, that's our resolution right there.
So we're going to entertain a motion to approve this resolution. So, motion by Joe. Second, second by Jordan, all in here?
Aye.
Aye.
We both, motion passed. All right, number twenty-six.
What, did you print them out? Yeah, I could go on.
Number twenty-six is the annual open meeting law review.
I wouldn't say it's the first annual, but that's some proper to say, but it will be the second annual next year, okay? Um, so one of the other laws passed this year was we had to, you know, had to have information for opening meetings. Reviewed once a year, and we decided what better time than to do it, we have to do the regular annual one, so. It's, it's just, this is actually the pamphlet Attorney General puts out. Um, everything in there is basic common sense, you know, talks about executive sessions, and there's, there's six. Different ways that we go to executive session, they've been in state law, nothing's changed there, whenever we go to executive session, we list the codified law and. For all the things that are required, you know, and we publish, um, we make sure it's more than twenty-four hours in advance. All the things that are required of, of the, uh, meeting, so I'm handing this out to the boards, the board has the information now. In the Attorney General's pamphlet form that they have on the website. And again, it's all the things we've been doing and, and, and all the others that are doing it correctly, we've been doing this all along. But it's good to have reminders of things, you know, as far as norms and that type of stuff, so. Have it handed out, so that we look at the open meetings laws, we have that handy for you, if you ever have questions. Moving forward. We have met the requirement of the.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the obvious law that we were violating.
We were not, so, um, I'm not sure where this came from, there was a push by some, and, and then that being just that we review it every year.
Is it?
There's nothing wrong with reviewing it, so.
Is it for us to get the public aware of what?
No, I think it was just for those that are conducting meetings to make sure.
That they're following rules.
County level, at the city level, at whatever level.
Well, my, my experience here is this has always kind of been top and center. That's just the way that.
Nobody wants to be in front of the open meetings.
Disconducting has always been kind of a priority for, for these six years, so.
You guys weren't one of the boards or commissions of any kind that were of concern when that bill was being advocated for?
That would be correct. Jordan?
Second.
Second by Joe, non-negotiable, meeting adjourned.
You gonna go to where the?
Yep.